Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is Wednesday, June 14th, regular board meeting of the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ettinger, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Burowski.
Here.
Betty Konek.
Here.
Carrie Kazlowski.
Here.
Eric LaMour.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zanobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
And Sue, can you verify the meetings have been properly posted?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Just a quick housekeeping reminder to all the board members at the table, pull your microphone close when you're speaking tonight. We have new technology that's excellent at noise cancelling, which means you have to be deliberate about speaking. So, thank you for that. I'll remind you a bit along the way tonight. All right. We're going to start with bright lights. We've got some visitors with us tonight. We're really excited to get started. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Seibert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We are fortunate to be joined here at our first meeting in the new boardroom at Blair by our Core 2062 Robotics Team. So I'm going to welcome Mr. and Mrs. Farrell, along with members of the team, to join us and to really highlight all the great successes they've had over the years, including this year, and just really a high-level overview of this incredible program that we're really fortunate to have be a part of our offerings in the School District of Waukesha. So, thank you so much for joining us, and thank you also for bringing your robot. We're really excited to hear from you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Juan. I am a junior at Waukesha North and the team's Communications Director.
Hi. My name is Ryan. I'm a junior at Waukesha South and the Assistant Engineering Project Manager.
Hi. My name is Alex. I'm a senior at Waukesha West, and I'm the lead of the control sub-team.
We are Core 2062, also known as the Community of Robotics Engineers. CORE is a part of an organization known as FIRST, which stands for For Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology.
FIRST is a global organization and is the world's leading youth serving nonprofit advancing STEM education. FIRST's mission is to inspire young people to become science and technology leaders of the future. They accomplish this through exciting mentor-based programs that build science, engineering, and technology skills. They accomplish this through exciting mentor-based programs that build science, engineering, and technical skills, which inspire innovation and that foster well-rounded life capabilities, which includes self-confidence, communication, and leadership.
FIRST has a great impact on students of all ages, building skills that help students in the classroom and beyond. This not only builds hard skills in STEM, but also incorporates a variety of soft skills. FIRST helps students by using hands-on learning and builds teamwork skills as students have to work together to solve real-world problems.
FIRST also exposes students to a global community of engineers and innovators, which leads students to having a greater understanding of the opportunities that they have. This builds a network which helps students in school and beyond.
An emphasis on FIRST's core values helps guide students. The core values of FIRST are discovery, innovation, impact, inclusion, teamwork, and fun. These values help guide students in their pursuits in and outside of the classroom. These values help make a unique culture in which young leaders in STEM are celebrated and are able to showcase what they have learned and created in the FIRST program.
As you have heard, one of FIRST's core values is inclusion. FIRST offers three programs with different challenges dependent upon age range. The one with the youngest age group is FIRST LEGO League, or FLL, which introduces STEM to elementary and middle school students. They gain real-world problem-solving experiences through a guided global robotics program.
The next program is FIRST Tech Challenge, or FTC, where middle through high school students learn to think like engineers. Teams design, build, and program robots to compete in an alliance format against other teams. Robots are built from a reusable platform powered by Android technology and can be coded using a variety of levels of Java-based programming.
FIRST Robotics Competition, or FRC, is for high school students and is the program which we participate in. FRC teams design, program, and build a robot using a common set of rules to play in a themed head-to-head challenge. Teams also build a brand, develop community partnerships for support, and work to promote STEM in their local community.
The FRC season kicks off on the first Saturday of January. Teams compete in alliances of three, leading to a three-by-three format for every game. Teams are allowed to build a robot with a maximum weight of around 125 pounds and a perimeter of 120 inches. FRC teams are given the same challenge and six weeks to fully design, build, wire, and program their robot for competition.
Running an FRC team is a lot like running a business, as teams have to fundraise money, mostly through corporate sponsorships, and have to manage that money when buying parts for a robot or paying for the team to go to competitions. FRC teams often do fundraising outside of the building competition season. This leads to FRC teams, such as CORE, being active year-round, which means that we promote STEM year-round.
Our mission statement is CORE 2062 strives to be a place where the passions of our students become skills, concepts transform into physical products, and zeal creates a positive community impact.
This shows just exactly what CORE 2062 is and what we strive to do. As you may have heard in our introductions, not all CORE members are from the same school. This is due to CORE being the School District of Waukesha's team, which includes students from all three high schools as well as homeschooled students. This past season, we had about 30 students and 12 mentors.
CORE has had a significant impact on the local community, participating in 46 FLL and outreach events from 2020 to 2022, as well as that we have reached over 10,000 people and have contributed 5,290 impact hours at these events.
Some of our highlights at the 2023 season are that we hosted and ran a FLL scrimmage and sectional. A week before our first competition, we had a great flood in which our closet, which we keep our robot and tools, unfortunately flooded. Luckily, there was no major damage done to our robot. After our second competition, we had a major revamp of the robot, redesigning and building a new robot between our second and third competitions. In three and a half days, we put in over 34 hours during our spring break to build it.
We competed at three different competitions this season. At our first competition in St. Louis, our team won the Team Sustainability Award, ranked 25th overall, and was the second pick of the fifth-ranked alliance. We were able to win one match in the playoffs and were eliminated in semifinals.
For our second competition, our lead mentor, Brian Farrell, was awarded the Volunteer of the Year Award, and our team was ranked 14th overall at the competition.
At our final competition, our team was awarded the Innovation and Control Award, and our mechanical sub-team lead Grant won the Dean's List Finalist Award. Our team ended up ranking 27th overall.
Here you can see our massive revamp of the robot that was at our competition between our competition in Milwaukee and our competition in La Crosse. For our first two competitions, our robot had a mechanism which is similar to the claw or crane game, and for our third competition, our robot did not have a claw and instead had an intake which shot out game pieces. As Ryan said, students sacrificed their spring break to help revamp the robot, and our new robot was overall more consistent, being able to score more points on average than our previous robot did.
We've also had a great community impact after the current season. Since April, we have participated in 13 outreach events and have reached over 1,000 people and have invested 380 hours at these events.
With your partnership, we can more easily implement FLL in our elementary and middle schools and raise funding for LEGO robotics equipment. As well as this, we can further invest into the Waukesha Engineering Preparatory Academy and CORE by investing into the space and machinery by maintaining the current equipment and modernizing equipment to meet current standards.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Any questions? Mr. Wad.
Yeah, so, just so I understand, is the challenge that you have in each competition different?
The challenge is different for every year, not for every competition.
So, when you went to St. Louis and then the next one, it was the same task you had to accomplish?
Yes, it was the same challenge.
I see. Interesting. Thank you.
Mrs. Voight. I heard that one of the people that are in our audience was recognized as the Volunteer of the Year, and I think it'd be appropriate for Brian to stand and be recognized for that honor. Are any of you programmers on the team? Where'd you get your Java skills?
Basically, we've just been using an online program called W3 Schools.
Okay.
This is where we are planning on using to train our future rookies.
For this coding, we use this website called W3 Schools, and we're planning on using it to train our future rookies.
Great. Mr. Burowski.
Yes, I just think the team showed incredible resilience with discovering the flood and then, you know, committing so much time over a three-day period to rebuild it. If you could just kind of briefly take me through a little bit of the thoughts or discussion that you had initially and how did you plan to then just recover from it?
Hi, I'm Grant. So basically, at that second competition, we didn't perform as we wanted to. We didn't get picked. We ended up not scoring a lot of points. So we took it back to the, to South, and we kind of broke down our problems. And we decided we wanted to focus on the cube that you see in that thing, the little purple cube. So, we score that by lifting that clear mechanism up and down and then shooting it. So basically, we said, if we can get really good at this one thing, we think we'll be a better robot, and we were. We were one of the top cube scores at that event.
Mrs. Koenig, and then Mr. Zanobia.
I just wanted to mention and say, your presentation skills and public speaking skills are incredible. You know, all of you are, which is incredible. Do you find during the competitions that you need to do quite a bit of the presenting? And do you feel like that those opportunities basically help create the phenomenal speakers you are today?
Yes. As the Communications Director, we have some submitted awards that we do submit at competitions. Part of those submitted awards is a presentation, as well as that a lot of it is branding. And so, at these competitions, we have a value called cooperation, and so that means like communicating with other teams and cooperating with them in order to be the best competition that we can be.
Mr. Zanobia.
Could a few of you speak to some of the job opportunities and career paths you see in robotics, or of any things that you may have already decided that you want to pursue?
So, recently, we went to a, one of our sponsors to like kind of take a tour of their whole company, and the sponsor actually offered me and Grant an internship there. And then, as well as that, like for job opportunities, many of our members are looking to go into some form of engineering or some form of STEM in college and really pursue that for their future.
Any other questions? Mrs. Kazlowski.
Thank you. I'm fascinated by all of this. So I, I think one of you mentioned that you are a senior. Are you graduating senior now or going to be a senior?
I'm going to be a senior.
Okay. So as a team, do you guys stay together then next year as well, so that you can build on team-building, working, and partnering, so that you really get to know your team and how that works?
So, when switching leads, because people do eventually graduate, we have a one-month period where the new incoming leader and the previous leader can communicate about any of the problems that they see, or like anything, any advice that the previous leader needs to give to the new leader, as well as that we have a Google Drive where all the previous leaders leave everything that they believe is necessary to functionally operate a sub-team.
I have one more. Go ahead.
I have one more. Kind of a fun question, and just because I have daughters who name things, but do you name your robots?
Yes, we do. So every year, it's a team-voted thing, and this year, so as you saw in the presentation, it used to be really big and really tall, and it got up to like taller than me almost. And so, we named it after one of the largest sauropods of like Cretaceous area, the Argentinosaurus, which is just a really cool dinosaur. That's kind of how that worked.
Thank you. That's great. Well, all the things that you guys described are honestly real-world engineering product development. You know, those failures are real things, and you've experienced them firsthand and overcome some really interesting challenges, and I'm proud of the teamwork across the district. You all are just such a great representation of the School District of Waukesha, and I'm grateful to have you here when you don't have to be in school on a summer night. So, thank you for spending your time with us, and congratulations to you on all of your success. Okay. So we're going to move on to our recognitions tonight, and we'll start with Mrs. Thede, who will introduce our new directors.
Okay. Green means done, right? Okay. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so this evening, I would like to begin with introducing Lisa Pollan. She's a Director of Secondary Special Education. So Lisa, will you please stand?
Yes, this is perfect.
So, Ms. Pollan has worked at all levels in the system, including alternative education. She currently serves as a High School Associate Principal. She's process-oriented and seeks to understand everyone she comes into contact with. So Ms. Pollan brings a multi-dimensional leadership perspective to this position. She has deep knowledge of both academic and behavioral expectations that are necessary for all students to be successful. She will be a proactive communicator and a listener, who will be, bring a calm presence to any complex situation. So we're happy to have her intellect and talent here in the School District of Waukesha. So welcome, Lisa. Okay. The next director I'd like to introduce is Jamie Kupkovitz. Did I get it?
Did I?
Okay. Okay, so Jamie will be the Director of Academic Student Services. So this is a little bit of a newer position. She's currently a school psych who comes to us with director experience. She has a depth of experience in response to intervention and universal design for learning to help close achievement gaps and opportunity gaps with all students. She is a process-driven leader who leads with data first. Ms. Kupkovitz will oversee data analysis in the system to work collaboratively with the Teaching and Learning Department and the Student Services Team. She has experience with acceleration for learners who are gifted and talented, while also having a deep understanding of the intervention systems to help increase student achievement across the continuum of learners in SDW. So again, we're pleased to have her skillset, and welcome to the district. Okay. And lastly, I have Hadassah Robinson to come and join me. Okay, so Hadassah might be a familiar face. So she is our next Director of Elementary Special Education, and she currently serves as a bilingual instructional coach for SDW. So while she'd be missed in that role, we are excited for her to begin her work as a director here. She has deep roots in the mission of the School District of Waukesha. She knows universal instruction and has a strong special education background, which has included serving as a special education teacher, chair, summer school special ed liaison, and summer school principal. She has a strong family connections and has experience with critical conversations in order to improve outcomes for all students. Communication and collaboration is a priority for her, and her high-energy level and expertise are welcome additions to this position. So welcome, Hadassah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. So I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Seibert, that's going to share some student recognitions with us. A little technical challenge.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We are going to continue our state recognitions for athletics. We're doing this each and every season, and we have so very much to be proud of. We are going to start with Waukesha North, and we have our boys' golf team here. I see Coach Knuth, I see Coach Johnson, and several members of the team. Come on up, gentlemen. And we'd love to talk about you first and foremost.
All right. I don't know. Peter, you're heading to the microphone here. Hey, all right. Hi, I'm Dan Knuth. I'm the head coach for the Waukesha North Boys Golf Team. So I'll start with some introductions with everybody behind me here. Coach Johnson, right here, is the assistant coach. I've got Jackson Piazek, he's a junior. Sophomore, A.J. Anderson, and freshman, Lucas Piazek, and then Peter Hepner, who's a senior right behind me. So, I mean, I'll just take a couple of minutes here, and then you can ask the boys some questions for sure, because they're super excited, I'm sure, to like take over the microphones as well. But you know, it's a pretty cool story, because you know, to get to a state competition, you got to pass all these, these trials. And the first one is regionals, and then you got to get past sectionals. And as you know, in southeastern Wisconsin, it's a really competitive athletic arena here in golf, for sure. So, regionals, we were playing okay, you know, but it's an advantage to be the second-place team, and we were currently in third as the meet was winding down at Nagawaki. And so this kind of started this like storybook ending for us, you know, for this year, because, you know, Jackson was on 17, and I was kind of like lurking between 17 and 18, you know, and I was standing way behind Kelly. She was up there trying to kind of hide to a little bit, and Jackson made, how long was your putt on 17 at regionals? It was like 50-foot putt, and I was like, oh my goodness, he just got a birdie. And so then we were tied with a team, O'Connell-Walk, who you'll hear about them again in the next meet. A great golf team, great coach, great, great kids. We really... Yeah, just, thank you. So then Jackson gets to the 18th hole, and I don't know, 25-foot or so? And we were presently tied, and he sank that, and then all of a sudden, we're headed, you know, to sectionals as the second-place team, which is an advantage, because then you play in the last group, the final pairings, is what you want to do. So then we're at sectionals, and this has been well documented. If you watched Fox Six, or Tim Van Voren did a great thing on Twitter. Again, we were playing, we were playing really well at the beginning of the meet, and then I don't know if we were getting a little tight, or what, or the course was getting the best of us, but teams were coming from behind, and O'Connell-Walk grabbed the lead. And then, so, we're down by one, and Peter is on the green, you know, on number 18, and I thought hit a putt pretty strong. I thought, I was like, oh god, this is going fast. And it just hit the center of the cup, did a little twirl, birdie number one. So, that was pretty cool. And then Coach Anderson is with Jackson in the fairway, and he goes, okay, just get a par. Let's, let's go to a playoff. Playoff's really cool, too. It's 10 kids on one hole. But Jackson gets up there, hits a eh, it's a par-five, hits an okay third shot. He's got a long ways to go, and again, probably 30 or 40 feet, right? And hits good pace, and he's just kind of watching it. Next thing you know, it's going in, he's running across, high-fiving his teammates, and we made it to state. And state is at Black Wolf Run in Sheboygan. It's really cool, because as coaches, you just get to coach, and you no longer are making rulings, because there's officials everywhere, really big galleries. You know, the first day was a scoring day, and the second day, it really got windy, you know, and we were like, whoo, this is going to be a totally different day. First day, we put ourselves in, were we currently at fourth place after day one, and you know, shot, shot pretty well, but knew it was going to be a dogfight the next day, and we just wanted to maintain and climb a little bit. The top two teams were, were really good and really strong that year, Eau Claire and Sheboygan. And we were able to pass the third-place team, and we took third at state, which was unbelievable. There's only 16 teams there. We felt very proud, and the first time in 30 years for Waukesha North. So, yeah, I'll let the guys come up. If you want to congratulate them or ask them a question, I'm sure they would love it.
You guys moved closer. All right. I'll answer a question. Any question? This is A.J. Yeah. Any questions or comments for, we're having a little technical difficulty. Mrs. Kazlowski.
I will attempt to make this easy on you for those who seem to be owning on the golf course and not so happy to be, having to be public. Coaches and all of you, congratulations. I, you know, there was such a following on you that really grew and swelled up, that I think as a community, we were overwhelmed with how proud we are. Has it sunk in that you have set a 30-year school record and really taken on, I mean, that's pretty incredible.
Thank you. I mean, not really. Kind of like, it's kind of crazy to think about it, how we were the first team in 30 years to do it, and how we were able to do it was kind of crazy. So, that was cool.
I have just one more. I'll just, I want to close out. I want to thank all of you for the sportsmanship. You know, the success that each of you have had has been remarkable individually, and when it came down to it, you all stood as a team for each other, with each other, behind each other, and I thought that really shined through in all of the media and in what we saw, both on the course and through it, and I was really impressed. So, kudos to all of you again.
Thank you very much.
We actually have, Dan and team, we have one more question, actually. Mr. Zanobia.
Sure. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. My, my big question was, for the four of you, if you could just go left to right and say, who would you credit most with your golf skills, mom or dad? I'll, I'll start. My dad always says it's him, but my mom is much better than he is. So, she's 80 years old, she still can sometimes crack 50, so, you know. Have any of you thought about if the, if the PGA Tour doesn't work out, what you might do after high school?
Go ahead, go ahead. Peter, yeah, tell me. Definitely my dad. I don't know. I'm going to college first, playing college sports, college golf, so we'll see how that goes. I'll graduate with a degree, and then I'll see, I'll turn pro, is the goal, and then we'll see from there. If I can't make it, I'll just take what I've got and go from there. So, yep. Thank you. Definitely my dad, and if I don't go pro in golf, probably just go to college somewhere. I don't really know yet. Still a freshman, so, yeah. I would definitely say my dad, too. He was a golf pro, so he kind of taught me everything, so that helped. And I play, I hope to go to college and play golf, but I don't know what I want to do besides that.
You really put me on the spot here, but I have to give it to my dad as well, unfortunately. But, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to play golf in college as well. Just looking at that kind of stuff. If that, if that doesn't work out, I've kind of looked into some finances stuff, insurance, because I know those guys are always taking days off to play golf and getting clients...
We teach life skills here in the School District of Waukesha. Excellent. Thank you, guys. All right. I think we have some more. Are we staying with, sticking with North and then, okay?
We're sticking with North, just a little bit. So we also had track award winners at North. We did a field for the 800, and he capped off a tremendous high school career at North. He was the classic eight, oops. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. He was the classic eight indoor and outdoor conference championship in the 800 meter, and he was a regional and sectional championship winner there as well, and he became North's male WIA Scholar-Athlete Award winner also. So, we also had at North, Ashley Davies. She was a three-time state qualifier in both the long and triple jump, and established both long and triple jump records at North, and broke a record that stood for over 35 years. So these 30-year records at North are falling like crazy, so that's really exciting to see.
And I plan, I hope to go to college and play golf, but I don't know what I want to do besides that.
You really put me on the spot here, but I have to give it to my dad as well, unfortunately. But, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to play golf in college as well, just looking at that kind of stuff. If that doesn't work out, I've kind of looked into some finances stuff, insurance, because I know those guys are always taking days off to play golf and getting clients...
We teach life skills here in the school district of Waukesha. Thank you, guys. All right, I think we have some more, or we...
We do.
Sticking with North, and then, okay.
We're sticking with North, just a little bit. So we also had track award winners at North, which was equal to 800, and he capped off a tremendous high school career at North. He was the classic eight, oops, thank you, Dr. Piazek, is the classic eight indoor and outdoor conference championship in the 800 meter. And he was a regional and sectional championship winner there as well, and he became North's male WIA Scholar-Athlete Award winner also. So, we also had, at North, Ashley Davies, she was a three-time state qualifier in both the long and triple jump, and established both long and triple jump records at North, and broke a record that stood for over 35 years. So these 30-year records at North are falling like crazy, so that's really exciting to see. She went to state, she placed eighth in the triple jump, ninth in the long jump, and she's going to continue her track and field career at UW-Lacrosse, and she was North's WIA Scholar-Athlete winner. So that's very exciting. And then, at the last time we had North here, we had Mr. Anderson, he talked about the Jerry Award winners for dance, and those were Jordan James, Nadia Lucy, Caitlin Stone was the outstanding director, the North English teacher, and then we also had students Grayson Wolf, Kayden Bry, Myla Kowitski, and Marcella Camburnaro. So, lots of great things going on at Waukesha North, very exciting. We are fortunate to have Mr. Dan Schreier here with us this evening, the athletic director at Waukesha South, and he'll give us some of the really great spring highlights from South.
Hello? Oh, perfect. Thanks for the invite, I'm very excited to share a few of the highlights from the spring season at South High. I'm going to celebrate a few regional, sectional, state, and national accomplishments, so it might be a little bit, because we've got a lot to celebrate at South High School. Throughout, I'm also going to point out a few of the individuals, both students and coaches, who have been a part of the tremendous successes, and update a few of the seniors on what they're doing next year. First off, congrats to Brian Farrell and the robotics team, the amount of work they put in is truly incredible. When the rain hit, I think it was a Monday morning, it was pouring literally in our cafeteria, Brian was quickly up to help inventory, and the team was ready to adapt, be resilient with all the challenges they faced in the middle of their competition season. Speaking of the Jerries, the black shirt players were celebrated at this year's Jerry's Award for, Jerry Awards for their production of The Spelling Bee. Junior Brianna Madsen and Senior Ivy Broder, who will be attending University of Minnesota Twin Cities, were awarded with outstanding leading performance. The entire production was awarded Outstanding Musical. There were 105 shows involved in the Jerry Awards, only 18 shows were awarded Outstanding Musical. With this award, they were also asked to perform at the Jerry Awards in Madison this past Sunday. So a number of our seniors graduated Saturday, then rushed up to rehearsal on Saturday, and then performed at the Jerry Awards in Madison. At the awards, they earned this Team Spirit Award. On June 6, the Waukesha South High School eSports team was recognized by the Common Council of the City of Waukesha for winning the Rocket League State Title for the second year in a row. The team was undefeated the entire season. Their coach, Andy Yep, is a phenomenal math teacher and human being, and has been advising gamers club, which is both board games and eSports for well over a decade. The boys' track and field team had a number of highlights throughout the spring. Tyron Cook took fourth in the high jump at the state tournament, jumping 6'7", he earned first-team All-State for the second year in a row, he was also on the podium his junior year. Tyron holds the school record for the high jump and is a two-time All-State athlete in both basketball and track and field. He will be attending Division One Virginia Military Institute to play basketball next year. We had two other top 20 finishes, Jovan Carter, a 10th grader, took 17th in the high jump, clearing six feet. And Connor Boyle, who's a three-sport athlete, competing in soccer, track, and on the ski-snowboard team, took seventh in the pole vault, clearing an amazing 14 feet. Jovan and Connor, obviously, will both be back for the black shirts next year, having opportunities to podium, hopefully, next spring. A few other spring sports celebrations, we have four sports coached by Waukesha South alumni, which I think is awesome in the spring. Baseball coached by alum John Stillman, tied for their most conference win since 2015 this season. They were led by junior lefty Tanis Lang, who has verbally committed to Ohio State, and senior captains Eric Teigs, who is playing baseball at Beloit College next year, and James Smith, who is playing baseball at Carroll University next year. Girl soccer coached by first-year alum Abby Lewis, graduated 10 seniors from varsity last year and 15 seniors overall. As the 11 seed, they upset the 6 seed in the regional semifinal and played a masterful game against the 3 seed, losing 1-0 in the regional championship. This was a chance at a second regional title for the black shirts in soccer this year, as our boys won the regional for the first time since 2005. They were led on the pitch by three senior captains, Cio Moro Sireaco, who is enlisting in the Army and gave a beautiful graduation speech on Saturday, Rosalia Perez and Hannah Reed, who are both attending UW-Madison in the fall. One other spring sport highlight, our boys' tennis team, also coached by an alum, Cassie Alexander, capped the year by qualifying both our one singles and our one doubles flight to the toughest sectional in the state. Junior Reed Mueller, who was also named an outstanding attorney for mock trials at one singles, and the doubles team of Ashook Sarah Vannan, a senior who will be attending Purdue University, and Nate Rabago, a senior who will be attending UW-Madison, all qualified after losing their first set and battling back to win in three, which speaks to the resilience of the student athletes at South High School. Mock Trial competed at Nationals in Little Rock in May after winning their third state title in three years. They were awarded the Larry Baco Award for professionalism and civility, which is an award that is voted on by their competitors. The award is given to a team that demonstrates professionalism, integrity, honesty, fair play, and respect. They continually amaze me at the work they do. A couple other celebrations, some of these are not in the athletic and activities world, but are worth the shout-out for the great things that are happening at South High School. We honored 50, over 50 students at the CLA by Literacy Global Scholars in Dual Language Awards Night. We honored 18 students who were selected for WCTC's dual enrollment program, saving a combined $80,000 in college tuition. We had over 110 scholarship awards awarded at senior scholarship night, and we had over 250 student athletes honored at the Scholar-Athlete Night, meaning South had 250 student athletes with above a 3.5 grade-point average. There it is.
Yeah, thank you so much for joining us, Dan, tons to be excited about, and congratulations on all the success at South.
Yeah, thank you for all the support.
More than welcome. All right, and then I will finish with some highlights from Waukesha West. They are track and field state successes. We had Navea Levinhagen in the 100 meters, finishing, actually, third, excuse me, she finished third at state in the triple jump. She was a first-team All-State honor as well. Myra Stray, she placed, let's see, 14th in the 1600-meter run, and she also, in the 800-meter run, thank you, Dr. Piazek, in the 800-meter run, she placed ninth, along with her friend Lily Newmeister, who placed 10th. They also had a 3200-meter relay team of Lily Newmeister, Valerie Bratt, Kylie Sorino, and Myra Stray, that captured third at the state meet, and also All-State first-team honors. And on the boys' side of track and field, Talon Gamez capped off an incredible career, finishing 12th in the 800. And sophomore Angel Eskamila continued to soar, placing eighth in the long jump and 10th in the triple jump, while also setting a new school record as a sophomore. So, overall, tons to be excited about at all three of our high schools, and just really appreciate the opportunity to highlight these successful students and their coaches, and think it's certainly a great testament to all the work that goes in and the overall school experience for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Seer. All right, we do not have any reports by student representatives, as they've earned their summer break, so no student reports tonight. We are moving on to the section of our agenda where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have five speakers tonight, because there are less than six speakers. We will notify you at three minutes, but you'll be allowed up to five minutes to complete your comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments by members of the community here tonight. We'd like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others, and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience, visual aids cannot be used in the area behind the speaker, and podium will be cleared during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphone at this time. Our first speaker tonight is Renee Messerschmidt, will be followed by Paul Reese, and we'll move the microphone back down to the podium before you start. We've got it. Dr. Cook, can you put the microphone stand-up on the podium? Oh, it doesn't fit? Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to hold it.
I might be too short.
You might just need to hold it, Renee.
I would like to address an ongoing facility issue occurring in the district. There's a serious lack of quality air conditioning, or even no air conditioning, in several of the schools. This typically isn't an issue during this time of the year, since school is released for the summer before it becomes too hot. However, the last few weeks of school, the weather was unseasonably hot, as high as 100 degrees some days. In buildings where the air, where there's quality air conditioning, this isn't an issue. But for schools that have no or unreliable air conditioning, this is a safety concern. When admin pushed for the merger of Hadfield and Woodyer last January, one of the big selling points for moving to Hadfield was the school had air conditioning. But the air conditioning is unreliable and not consistent throughout the building. I learned of this at the beginning of the school year and brought it to the board at a regular meeting in September, stating the AC was unreliable then and needed to be addressed. It wasn't, and this spring, the air conditioning on some of the hottest days of this year went out almost daily. I shouldn't have to tell you how the lack of quality air conditioning, especially in a school that doesn't even have windows in all of its rooms, can impact a student's learning and attentiveness. This also impacts what activities a teacher can do in their classroom, choosing less interactive activities to help reduce the heat of all the bodies in the room can produce. Though the school district of Waukesha sent someone out to fix the problem, the AC continued to fail routinely. It was more like slapping a Band-Aid over the problem than actually dealing with the issue, which is that the air conditioning at Hadfield is too old and needs to be replaced. To further my concern, I have learned that Hadfield and Hayer are hosting summer school this year, one school with unreliable air conditioning and in windowless classrooms, and another school with no air conditioning at all. Why is the district picking schools with no or low-quality air conditioning to house summer school? Before financing facilities comes back with it's not in the budget, I'm going to stop you right there. If you can put air conditioning into Woodyer for STEM and plan to put air conditioning into Blair, then there's more than enough money to address the poor air conditioning in some schools and put air conditioning into the schools that don't have it at all. Furthermore, I would argue that the schools with no air conditioning should be getting air conditioning before admin does in Blair. If it is okay for our kids to suffer in the heat, then it is okay for you to suffer in the heat with them. Finance and Facilities Committee, I strongly urge you to replace the air conditioning at Hadfield and add air conditioning to the schools that have none. There is money in the budget, please use it for our students.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Sarah Harrison.
Your noise-canceling technology is working real well, because I can't hear squat. And I don't know if it's because of all the ambient noise that it's shutting down your mics, but I can't hear nothing back there. Also, Joe, good luck, it's been a pleasure, better things to you, you deserve it, I'm sure you'll do well, and McWannago is a great place, and they're lucky to get you. Also, I want to talk about our AP courses that we've been, in teaching and learning, we've been going through, and we've been talking a little bit about debating things with our governance, AP Governance Course. And debates are interesting. I'm not really into high school debates, my daughter came home and told me about one, and I felt like I was dumber when I stood up than when I sat down. I don't think they really understand how to look at evidence in a debate. They want to argue something, but they have no real, they have nowhere to grab evidence from when they're debating. And they don't understand it. Most people don't understand what debates are, how you're looking at evidence, and you're trying to determine what is, to avoid circular reasoning is a big thing. And so evidence, also debates can be used to move things forward. Scientifically, they can be used to move things forward. At the early 20th century, Einstein and a group of physicists were involved in some debates about quantum physics, and they really moved things forward by challenging one another. So debates are done like that, but they had plenty of evidence to grab from. Kids really don't, and they don't understand how debates work. And how, even a question, a debate question, you can change the answer or the outcome of it without changing the evidence. I can ask, I could ask Siri, and I phone three, a question that I could ask today, and I can get two different answers from then to now. And the evidence hasn't changed since time began, but yet the outcome has because of who we put weight on, and how that's done. And it's a simple question to ask. And this question would be, how many planets are there? You know, just a few years ago, that was nine, now it's eight. Yes, Siri, that question, what's changed? The evidence hasn't changed, it's still the same, but yet the outcome has because other people debated it. And we trust in their debate, that what they came to as an outcome, to what our opinion is on these subjects. And there's a lot of things like that. There's things from paleontology that we view this way, that when, whoa, all of a sudden, I'm getting echo, that evidence, that when we look at it, they can change how they see things, oh, this is really annoying. Anyways, so, the kids don't understand this, they have no clue on how to gather evidence and change evid, you know, how it changes and how to form a cohesive thought. And to be able to pull something when you're debating, you have to be able to do that, and they just don't really do that, and they don't understand it. And most people don't understand what they're looking at, and how you're trying to change opinion from fact, that, you know, there's, there's an old saying, that a-holes and, a lot like pinions, everyone has one, you know? And you have to decipher those things and extract things from that, and be able to come up with a good conclusion. And high schoolers just aren't able to do that, and I see that so much in the world, where people just argue over the sake of arguing, and they don't understand that you're looking at evidence, and how you perceive this evidence through your life experiences. Anyways, it's a little better, thanks.
Our next speaker is Sarah Harrison, followed by Tariq Akmut.
I think I'll just hold it, so I don't have to lean over. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Harrison, and I am the mother of a Waukesha South student and a Waukesha North alum. I'm here tonight to discuss how board actions have impacted the overall educational environment and educator retention in the school district of Waukesha. Over the past three years, we have seen a nationwide conservative push against teaching about Black history, literature, and gender identity in public schools. This month, the Southern Poverty Law Center, or the SPLC, identified Moms for Liberty as a, excuse me, as an extremist hate group that advances an anti-student inclusion agenda. SPLC likens Moms for Liberty to pro-segregationist parent groups following Brown v Board of Education, when the integration of public schools caused a movement to undermine public education. To quote Shannon Hiller of Princeton University, "That was hateful then, and this is hateful now." Multiple SDW board members have been endorsed by Moms for Liberty in their elections. Our parental Bill of Rights and Transparency Policy was clearly modeled on the template that is available on their website. The first sentence of each of those documents is basically identical. Implementation of the Parental Bill of Rights and the Controversial Issues Policies demonstrates that most of our school board gladly follows this national anti-inclusion agenda. You have created a toxic environment in our schools, where students and teachers are fearful to speak up when they see something wrong. I've seen SDW educators describing the board as engaging in culture wars by whitewashing our curriculum. Ironically, this whitewashing actually includes censoring the Brown v Board of Education video from Brain Pop. Unfortunately, resignations in SDW are up. In April through early June, we lost 28 educators in 2021, compared to 54 in '22 and 49 in '23. Our bright young SDW students will enter a diverse world after graduation, whether they decide to attend college or go directly into a career. Please help them to embrace this beautiful, diverse world that we live in, stop creating policies grounded in the hateful movement of anti-inclusion. You set the tone, you set the policies, you can make SDW a school district where all people... district where all people are welcome, safe, and free to be exactly who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Tariq Akmut, followed by Monica Whaley.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education of Waukesha. I'm here, just like the other speaker before, have spoken about diversity. Diversity is important, okay? Because that's what makes the U.S. great. That's why people want to be in the United States of America. It was built on the premises of diversity, of welcoming the poor, tired masses. I'm just paraphrasing what's on the base of the Statue of Liberty. But that's what you have to stand for. I know we won't always agree, but if we shut voices out, it is progress that is denied. It leads to staff leaving the school district of Waukesha, which is unfortunate, because you lose, when you lose a teacher, and say, oh, you know, we can replace Person A with Person B, and everything, the machine will hum along properly. Well, that's not accurate, because a teacher who has spent a number of years in the school district of Waukesha has added to the educational opportunities of this district. When you bring a new person in, just like when you go to, when you join a different company as a new employee, you aren't at the same level of productivity as a person who has been there a number of years. So please, I'm asking you to let's move away from these policies of exclusion and move to policies of inclusion. Thank you.
Last speaker tonight is Monica Whaley.
First of all, I'd like to say Happy Pride Month to everybody here. I'm sure you all celebrate. How many of you have a child in this district? How many of you have a child with special needs? How many of them identify as members of the LGBTQ community? How many of them qualify for free and reduced meals, heat assistance, rent assistance? How many of you have a child of color in this district? How many have a child in the district who has experienced bullying and harassment? All of you in here. How many of you sitting here tonight are white, privileged, middle-income? How many of you own your own homes, have medical insurance? How many of you can go to the grocery store, purchase the food that you want and you like? How many of you are heterosexual? How many of you identify as neurotypical? These are all examples of the disparities that we have between this community and the school district of Waukesha leaders. How do you, as a board and administration, make your decisions for the greater good of this community? Based on life experiences, education, empathy, political ideology? Let me give you a couple more examples of the disparity that I see. Thursday night, my beautiful daughter graduated from Waukesha East. When I walked into the gym, I saw a beautiful array of students of all colors. I saw gay and straight students. I witnessed students who I know to have IEPs, along with high-achieving students, all celebrating together. Now, many people on the Internet may say that they disagree with me. They say it was only a celebration. But when I observed cap and gowns, student speakers, the plane of pomp and circumstance, a principal giving the Declaration of Graduation, and having students move their tassels from one side of their cap to the other, that, to me, is a graduation ceremony. The only thing missing from that? Anybody in this room. When the most concentrated marginalized school in this district has a graduation ceremony and no one from the district attends, that's disgraceful. That's disparity. I have another. Mr. Superintendent, when was the last time you had a face-to-face conversation or even a meeting with a person of color in your administration? Let me rephrase that. When will you have your first conversation with a person of color in your administration? This is disparity. Another example. What happens when a school board member demands that an AP class be added to the curriculum for their own child? Poof, a new AP class is added. But what happens when many parents of special-needs children ask the administration to have IEP minutes met? Poof, the whole special education administrative team, special education teachers, and special education assistants leave the district? This federally mandated program cannot be sustained because of financing special education programming? The special education students is not a priority for you. This is a disparity. So I ask you again, how do you make your decisions for the majority of this district's students and teachers? Through life experience, education, empathy, or political ideology? Whatever it is, it's not working. How about we give equity a try and do what's best for all students?
Thank you. We will begin with our first item of business, which is minute approval. You have received minutes for the May 10 regular board meeting, May 10 executive session, and June 5 executive expulsion panel. Just to remind everyone, there were some technical corrections to each of those sets of minutes that you either received by email, and they've been attached to board docs. So I would be looking for a motion to approve all three sets of minutes. Moved by Mr. McCaffrey, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Wad. Thank you. I'm sorry. I thought I saw you move to second.
Well, I was actually going to make the motion, but I'm afraid my mic...
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. We're having some technical difficulties, so we'll pass the microphones around. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ms. Eddinger, is there a question? Thank you. I apologize. We do, please take the roll call vote.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Mark Valmore?
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. I was trying to be creative to overcome the technical problem, but obviously that's illegal. So, thank you. All right. Moving on to our WEF report. Mr. Borowski, is your microphone working?
I think so.
Yes, it is.
All right. I'm going to try to be loud. Thank you, Mrs. President. The WEF Board last met a couple of weeks ago, on June 1, and we are really still celebrating after awarding $50,000 in grants to educators during our surprise grant deliveries on May 18. Again, congratulations to the 49 grant winners this year. A list of the grants is at your desk this evening, so you have a list there to take a look at. We also got some great press in the Waukesha Freeman, and a copy is at your desk of that as well. It was just really a great day overall. We also awarded just over $40,000 in scholarships this year to 51 graduating seniors across all three high schools. A copy of the press release, part of which was printed in the Freeman, is at your desk as well, for your reference. And again, congratulations to all the scholarship winners. If I could just add, you know, personally, I had an opportunity for the first time to present some of these grants on May 18, and it was really just very enjoyable to do that, to surprise the different teachers and get back to St. Saratoga, where both my daughters went. So that was very enjoyable as well. It was kind of good to see their hard work of putting the grant in come to fruition for them. I was also able to attend the West Senior Scholarship Event, and, you know, that event as well, a lot of surprised students, very happy students, obviously. Really, those two events, along with the graduations over the weekend, and then last night's Partners in Education event that was at Carroll. You know, suffice to say, I think the district is really ending on a high note, and it's been really very enjoyable the last couple of months to celebrate so many different positive events that are going on. All right, golf registration's still open, if you haven't registered yet, for our fundraiser on August 3 at Ironwood Golf Course. We have a handful of sponsorships left, so please contact us for more information and visit the website to learn more. And as a reminder, you can both register for the golf tournament as well as become a sponsor by visiting there. And again, if you want to pay by check or need an invoice for your business, you can call our office at 262-970-1143 to do that. We will call or email you to manually register. And just a reminder, this event does sell out, so it's less than two months away. Also wanted to thank the school board members who did attend last night's Partners in Education event at Carroll University. It was, again, an enjoyable event and well put on. The board, the WEF Board, I should say, does not meet in July, so they will update you again in August after that meeting. And I think that's pretty much all I've got. Any questions?
Just a quick comment. Kudos to Lynette Kelmidge and her team. Last night's event was fantastic. The coordination around delivery of the scholarships, I know Mrs. Voight knows what that experience is like, and I think that's also just very well done and very well coordinated. I know where you can find some golf-playing partners, if anybody's looking to round out their foursome. They might be in the parking lot still. So I would encourage everybody to participate. You don't have to golf. As I think a lot of you well know, there's a lot happening that day. So I would just encourage folks to be present and engage with that, because that's a lot of fun. And thank you very much, Mr. Borowski, for that report. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, we're going to start with the public gifts. Mr. Clark, would you present the gifts?
Yeah, two gifts. 2008 Chevrolet Silverado 1500, estimated value of $3,000, was donated from Alice Tool and Machine Corporation to be used for demonstration of diagnosing and servicing various systems in the high school automotive classes. And then Hadfield Elementary received $3,500 from St. Luke's Lutheran Church to be used to support the students of Hadfield.
That's very generous. Thank you. All right. Your consent agenda tonight includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Quite a few items included tonight, beginning with the decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on June 5, 2023, a confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your packet Friday, along with the minutes included under Item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Also included in your consent agenda tonight are a number of policies and bylaws. Policy, bylaw 0100 definitions, 0115 address, 0155 committees, 14223122 and 4122 nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, 162331234123, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination in employment, 166233624362 employee anti-harassment, 2260 nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity, 2260.01 Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability, 2260.02 services for bilingual students and English learners, 8420.01 epidemics and pandemics, 8450 control of casual contact communicable diseases, and 8600 transportation. Just as a reminder, Policies 8405 Environmental Health and Safety Program and 8800 Religious and Patriotic Ceremonies and Observances were tabled at the Policy and Government Relations Committee meeting earlier this week and will be brought back in August for continued discussion. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time. Okay, seeing no requests. Mr. Borowski, would you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President. So, earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved 35 resignations, including two revised release dates, one leave request, and 46 new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey, thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Mark Valmore?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 9-0. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Stevert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a couple of items for the board this evening. First, just want to say thank you to our staff, kids, and families for a great school year. Went very, very fast, and we just continue to marvel that it's over. Part of it might have been our move here to Blair as well, but just very grateful that it was another successful school year. Second, similar to how last month I provided a Lindholm history, today I'd like to provide some history on our new home here at Blair for all of you. And the original Blair Building was actually built in 1890, and I'm going to try to show it to you. 1890? So there it is. 1890. There's the bell still out front. So at this time, the Blair Building was named after William Blair. He was a manufacturer of threshing machines and the president of the county bank. We, the original building faced Chicago Avenue, so by the back parking lot. And the next picture I have is some of the staff from the first original Blair School. So that's really pretty neat to see. And then, this last photo is just another look at it with some, it's around 1900, with some students out in front. And as the last photo states, you probably maybe can't quite read it, but our current Blair Building was built in 1966, the one that we're sitting in today, facing Hyde Park Avenue, where the main entrance is. And then there was an addition constructed to this building in 1986 to give us the facility that we have today. So it was a school until 2019, at which time it was closed. It sat vacant for a period of time, and now it's really great that we're able to repurpose it and use it and not have any vacant buildings within the school district of Waukesha at this time, which is great. One of the interesting parts of this building is we have talked with people who were here in the '70s and went to school, and at that time, there were three buildings that were here. We're having trouble finding pictures of that, but each of those buildings were for different grade levels at the time. So we'll continue to do some work on that. But overall, we're settling into Blair. It's going to be a very good home for us for many, many years, just as Lindholm was. And like I said earlier, we're just excited to repurpose this building. Coming up in the future months, I will be closing on Randall with Carroll University at the end of this month. So next month, we'll do a little Randall history for you, as that one will leave the district portfolio as well. And then we'll also be excited in the coming months to invite some of our custodial and maintenance staff that have done just incredible work. So much of the work to get both Blair and Woodyer ready have been done by our own internal men and women, which has saved us an incredible amount of money. And really, they're so talented, it gives them incredible pride to be able to do that work. And so we'll bring some of them in to really highlight them, celebrate them, and have you tell them about all the great things that they've done to get these buildings looking as good as they do. So with that being said, that concludes my report, Dr. Piasik, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the time and effort that you and your team and Darren and the facilities team have put into making this work for us. Obviously, we've got to figure some things out. We've got some growing pains. I think we learned tonight that we replaced train noise with pool announcements, which is going to be lots of fun over the next few years. So, you know, just kind of getting comfortable in our new space. And I know all of you are still unpacking and still kind of making all this happen. So thank you. It looks really nice.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to begin our committee reports tonight with teaching and learning. And Mrs. Kozlowski, thank you for standing in for me this month. And Mrs. Kozlowski will be giving the committee report.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, June 6. This was our first TNL This item will be brought forward at the July full board meeting in order to meet DPI statute requirements. Therefore, this is a preview of what we will be asking you to approve next month. The approval of the district academic standards must annually include an item on the agenda on the first school board meeting of the upcoming school year that clearly identifies the student academic standards adopted by the board under Section 118.30, Parent 1G, Parent A1 of the state statutes. This information is located on the district's homepage along the left-hand side under annual notices, as well as a more detailed matrix under the Teaching and Learning section of our website. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the School District of Waukesha academic standards as presented. This action item will be placed on the July board meeting to request full board approval. The next two action items were for approval of the AP World History and AP Government textbooks. AP World History went through the textbook adoption process to ensure its textbook resource is current, relevant, and aligned to college board core standards. During the winter and spring semesters, teachers and students participated in the pilot process, which has been discussed multiple times at the TNL Committee. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the purchase of Traditions and Encounters, Seventh Edition, for adoption and implementation in the 2023-24 school year. The committee requests board approval and ISO move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any questions or discussion about AP World History? Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I was wondering if I can get a clarification on some information that was included in the deck. In the rationale for adoption, it talks about there being an average of 300 students per year who take the course. I just want to confirm, is that 300 who are taking AP history? Because there's a reference earlier to regular or AP is required. I'm assuming this is a book specifically for AP history and that the 300 student average is for the AP history course. Is that correct?
I'm going to address your question to Mrs. Landish.
Yes, you're right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. The 300 is across, the AP course is across our system. This is just an AP purchase, yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Paul Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0.
The next action item was the approval of the AP Government textbook. AP Government is also going through the textbook adoption process to ensure its textbook resource is current, relevant, and aligned to college board core standards. Teachers and students piloted several resources this past school year. On a vote of four to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the purchase of American Government Stories of a Nation for adoption and implementation in the 2023-24 school year. The committee requests board approval and ISO move. It is noted after discussion that the committee recommended that the AP course syllabus for AP Government will be brought forward in August, September, and then request for action in October of the next school year. That added additional clarification on contexts that would be covered.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. Discussion or questions about the book? Mr. Wad?
Yes, I also have a question about the enrollment that's noted for AP Gov. I see that it's noted at 125 students per year. I'm wondering if someone can share with me how that number of students for AP Gov compares to other AP courses that we offer within the district. Is that typical? Is history high? Is this lower than we see for most? What's...
It's a little bit lower than some. It's a senior-level course, so sometimes I would say it might fade off a little bit with some seniors taking this course in particular, but we, I mean, we have 26 course offerings in AP, which is almost the highest, I would say, in the entire county. And we have a great span of students that are enrolling in courses. So I don't have the trend data in front of me to say, but these teachers aren't teaching full-time course loads in this area, which some AP courses we do. So they also are teaching additional courses because they don't have a full-time load. It's only a few sections in this area. But I can get you some, you know, in an update, I can certainly give to you some broad details of enrollment numbers. I just don't have those in front of me, Mr. Wad.
That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Zenobia?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if you can hear me or not. Thank you. So mine is really more of a comment. I've, as anyone who had watched TNL knows, I had kind of struggled with this textbook being brought forward. And I have had many conversations since with Ms. Landish and Ms. Herman, and I'm hopeful and confident that the structuring that we will look at over the next few months will align this course, not only for students taking the AP exam, but also as a learning opportunity to balance what I see as a lot of shortcomings of the book with educational values. So I like the book as of now. We'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Mrs. Koenig?
I also want to mention, too, that we had a very lengthy discussion about the book. I'm very confident that our teachers are going to be able to supplement and add a lot of additional perspectives to the book. And the teachers that piloted and the group that looked at the book, it was the closest book that aligned to the AP's prep and standards for the AP exam. And we kind of talked about that that was important. If we want our students to do well, we want to have a resource that's going to enable them to be ready for a test of that rigor. So after a lot of discussions, you know, I definitely am much more, you know, inclined to accept this as a good resource for now for us. And I will be curious, you know, five to six years down the road to see how our results are bearing. And, you know, I'm hoping that we have some wonderful results with this resource.
Mr. Wad?
Thank you. So I, too, followed the Teaching and Learning as this passed through Teaching and Learning. First of all, I want to thank Teaching and Learning, the people that were involved in vetting this and a number of other textbooks, the Teaching and Learning Committee for what were substantive discussions around what I think are legitimate concerns about this I reviewed it. I didn't read it cover to cover, but it's clear to me, and I think others on the Teaching and Learning Committee have expressed, there is noticeable and in places substantial bias on particular issues. And I also appreciate both the educational staff and Teaching and Learning committing to ensuring that in those areas where the greatest bias is present, there will be concerted effort to call additional material to provide to the students, to provide balance. So I am going to support the adoption of this textbook, but there are just a couple of things that I want to call out. It is unfortunate that school districts are placed in a position where they have to adopt a textbook they know is biased because it is the least biased of the book that they can find because it conforms to the specific standards that the college boards require for the AP exam. We are being asked to trade what should be, especially in an area like AP Government, a balanced textbook and materials with increasing the workload presumably of our educational staff to find the balance that the authors couldn't provide, and essentially complicate and make more time-consuming the process of preparing for that course simply to meet the AP requirements. Now, I asked about the enrollment in AP Gov because I'm very curious as to whether this is a trade-off we want to continue to make going forward. Is it worth it to our staff, to our students, to continue to make these trade-offs in material for a course that maybe doesn't draw as many students as other courses where we don't have this problem? That is clearly a discussion for a later time, and I'm not suggesting we have to have that discussion now. But I will continue to be watching these books that, particularly those that present either, you know, government, civics, history for bias, and continue to push back on adopting textbooks simply to ensure our kids can pass an AP exam when we know those materials are not properly balanced. I know that there are people who feel this is about controversial issues. It is not about controversial issues. It's not for me. I heard, I think, every member of the Teaching and Learning Committee say the same thing. This is about ensuring that controversial issues are provided in a balanced manner to help our students be able to think critically through them. And I'm grateful that we have staff and administration who are committed to ensuring that happens, but I am disappointed that this continues to be a problem that I'm sure many, many, many districts feel like they're facing, that they don't have balanced materials available to provide to their students in order to get them through an AP course, to provide them with the college credit they're seeking by taking it in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Wad. Any other comments or questions about the book?
I do just want to reiterate, in working with the administration and kind of bringing these pilots forward, I can appreciate how much time and effort our staff and our students and everybody put into this. And without repeating what Mr. Wad said, I do appreciate what every single board member has invested in terms of time and understanding what's in the book, not just the book itself, because we recognize that there's the book and then there's the course, and there are supplemental materials that are critical foundational materials on the structure of American government and politics. And my great expectation and hope is that in collaboration with, I think, an amazing staff who's demonstrated incredible outcomes in this course over the last few years, that we will continue to put our students in a position of critical thinking and processing information and learning how to process information that they don't necessarily agree with. And I think that's just part of life in America. So I think we're going to continue to look at some things as far as the curriculum goes and keep an eye on the course. Maybe a positive and a negative is that because the outcomes in this course have been so good, it's going to be difficult to see the impact of these new materials. But I know that our teachers are very excited about the resources that they have available. So that's where we're at. Any other comments? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Paul Moore. Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes 9-0. Mrs. Kozlowski.
We have four discussion or information items. The first discussion is the discussion of a three-year library plan. State statute PI 8.01, School District Standard Parent 2, Parent H outlines library media service requirements regarding a long-range library plan. Over the course of the school year, the library media specialists have used the Future Ready Librarian Framework, a resource from the Department of Public Instruction, as the foundational resource to guide the development of the three-year plan. This report provided information on the Future Ready Library Resource, the process that was taken to develop the plan, and the details of the plan itself. The three-year plan that has been collaboratively developed is meant to be a rolling document and adjusted on an annual basis. Any questions, comments? All right, the next discussion item is the review of UBDs for physical education for grades 6 through 8. The Physical Education Department has been working over the spring months to update their middle school UBD syllabi for implementation in the 2023-2024 school year. Physical education is required for all students in middle school in all three grades, and the courses incorporate the state-mandated health standards. These UBDs will be presented for approval at the August Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. The third discussion item is the principal sale reviews. Sale, or student advancement in learning, is our continuous improvement framework in Waukesha. Each year, as part of our accountability processes, we have our principals do an internal presentation around Foleman's Coherence Framework components. This spring, we specifically focused on our school's student learning goals, their progress with cultivating collaborative cultures within their school, deepening learning for all staff, and securing accountability around our key performance indicators. Ms. Landish highlighted some of the achievements from our school district over the course of the 2023 school year. Any questions? And the last discussion item is Teaching and Learning: A Year in Review. The Teaching and Learning Team, Waukesha teachers, and school board members have put forth a collaborative effort to enhance several areas of teaching and learning during this academic school year. As a result of our collaborative efforts, we have accomplished several things that will help increase student academic success. Ms. Landish provided a high-level overview of some of these celebrations, which included approval and introduction of 11 curricular resources, utilizing approximately $2.5 million this year, and a total of 37% of ESAR funds overall for learning recovery and curriculum enhancements, introduction of district key performance indicators, growth in dual enrollment programs and funding, gifted and talented resources, improvement to elementary and middle school grading and report cards, and operational improvements in optimizing digital applications and use of Common School Funding media resources. This was an incredible, lengthy, and monumental achievement this past year. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, following the Student Services meeting in the boardroom at the Blair Administration Building. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Wad?
Yes, if I could, I just want to thank the Teaching and Learning folks for putting together this Year in Review document. It's outstanding. I think it is an important reminder, not just to the people at this table and the people in the district or in the, within the school district, but also to those of us or those in the community to see what has been accomplished in the last year. It is phenomenal, and you all should be very proud of what has been accomplished in the previous year. I just want to take it one step further and say, I think this would be a fantastic tool for every committee to consider, or committee or group within the school district to consider doing, whether it be annually, on a quarterly basis, so that we can continue to celebrate our successes. In those places where maybe we fell short, we call them out and identify what next steps will be taken, not just for ourselves, but for those of us in residing in the district to know what is actually taking place. Because I think so much happens in committee meetings. And I think the board does such a fantastic job of staying on top of what's happening there, that when we get to the board meeting where the broader public is seeing these items come forward, they don't have the context or an understanding of how deep some of these issues go in terms of the impact they'll have on the success of our students or other areas of the district. So I'd just like to encourage other groups to consider doing something similar going forward. This was terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. Those of you on TNL or who have been on TNL know just how much work it is to prepare for those meetings, and I think sometimes it's harder for folks who aren't on TNL to catch up with the things that actually are happening in the committees. So kudos to all of you for all the extra work. I think one of the neatest things was, you know, we switched committee membership kind of mid-swoop on some of these big curricular items, and you guys didn't miss a beat. Everybody kind of did their homework and...
I think one of the neatest things was, you know, we switched committee membership kind of mid-swoop on some of these big curricular items, and you guys didn't miss a beat. Everybody kind of did their homework and kept pace with where we were at. So great accomplishments, excited to see what this brings across all different grade levels over the next few years. And we still have quite a bit of work to do. I know we're getting into the electives, so lots ahead of us. But we should be really proud of how we've used those ESR funds, and I'm looking forward to another really productive year. All right. Moving on to our next committee is Student Services, which will be presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. My report this evening is on two committee meetings. We had two committee meetings since the last full board meeting. We had one on May 16th, which will be my first two items, which is one action item and one discussion information item. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I'm going to use this one. Is that better? Okay. Thank you. The action item that we had on the agenda was to approve the RBHI Merit SDW Partnership Pilot Program for Screening to Care in the Areas of Anxiety, Depression, Suicidality, and Substance Abuse for the 2023-2024 school year. Revere Greyst and John Greyst from Merit Solutions and Jerry Halverson from Rogers Behavioral Health joined us in person. Janet Lindau and Kaylee Brown from the Montana Rural Behavioral Health Initiative joined us via WebEx. The committee was presented with a plan for piloting their screening program at East Alternative High School for next fall. The committee asked questions regarding the program, opt-in, opt-out, and funding. Those questions were answered by Janet and Kaylee, who have firsthand experience with the program in Montana. I move approval of the RBHI Merit SDI Pilot Partnership for Screening to Care in the Areas of Anxiety, Depression, Suicidality, and Substance Abuse in East Alternative High School for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Thank you. Any comments? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. So we've been talking about this on the Student Service Committee for about weeks now, and I think, you know, as a general board. But I will say, you know, now is no better time than now to bring this forward to our school district, as mental health is on the rise. And I think that we have a plan to move forward on this. And I want to just first congratulate Ms. Janet and Kaylee for doing an amazing job providing the data and the experience with screening children and their experiences in Montana. But I also will say thank you to the administration for tackling this as well, and the Student Service Committee. The Student Service Committee, the administration, and our partners at the services in Montana, Ms. Janet and Kaylee, all have came together to really put this forward. And so I'm looking forward to what the next steps will be as we roll this out, and what the future will look like for mental health in the next couple of years to come. So I just want to say I'm all for this. I think it's no better time than now, as our students are facing a lot of challenges in life, especially with trauma crisis in their lives. And so I will be interested to see what the data shows us from those screenings as we continue to roll this out and move forward. So again, I want to say thank you to Ms. Janet and Ms. Kaylee, and the administration here, and the Student Service Committee. Just a reminder here that the Student Service Committee actually was new when I got on the board, and so I want to point that out. And so seeing this come out of this committee is just a blessing, and I look forward to seeing what it holds for this program being into our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other comments? I have one, and that's just to reiterate that, you know, what I really like about this program and our ability to pilot it with our students at East is, these are validated tools. We're not making anything up. We're not relying on teachers or other adults to make judgments of students. These are validated tools, and the resources are available and ready for students who are identified with any level of risk. And I think that's ultimately where we want to be. And I think that's the best that we can do to help our students, to make sure that if we do identify a problem, that we're able to help them right away. I think the success that they've demonstrated in Montana has been really impressive, and I also think that we'll have questions, and this will be a learning experience for us. So I love the idea of the pilot. I also want to thank Dr. Cook for the time that he and his team have spent and invested in this and thought through all the little nuanced things behind the scenes about where documentation goes and how parents are engaged and all of that, because I think it was just a really thoughtful endeavor. And we don't always see the behind-the-scenes work, but appreciate that as well. We have a seconded motion. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad.
Aye.
Mark Paul Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
All right. Thank you. Up next is the one discussion item that we had on the May 16th meeting. We had an ATODA update. Mark Leonard, Director of Student Services, and Jody Evinger Bentley, who is the District ATODA Coordinator, presented information and answered questions about the district's programs for OT- ATODA prevention and intervention. Their presentation included current programs and plans for the 2023-2024 school year. Essentially, this is for alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. We were, I was informed that the tobacco is primarily vape now, is what they're working And that concludes my report for the May 16th meeting. The second meeting was held on June 6. We had no action items, but we had two discussion information items. The first one is the Discipline Work Group. Mark Leonard, Director of Student Services, and Jen Guenerman spoke about the last Discipline Work Group meeting of the year, held on May 25, 2023. At the meeting, a team of school counselors shared their roles and responsibilities in response to student behaviors. Following their presentation, we debriefed as a large group about what they were seeing at their schools. The schools broke into small groups to talk about their database successes with Tier One and Two interventions and have been implemented for eight weeks. For the 2023-2024 school year, the discipline team will become a district project team. A project team will consist of representatives from across the district, similar to other project teams within the Teaching and Learning Department. Moving into the next school year, each school's continuous improvement framework, or sale plan, will have a behavioral component moving forward. Any questions? All right. Moving on, my second discussion information item is Human Trafficking Update. Mark Leonard presented information about the Waukesha Anti-Trafficking Task Force, with Task Force members Michelle Mater and Deborah Ruland. The Task Force works with Five Stones of Fox Valley to create awareness of the problem of human trafficking and prevent the victimization of young people. On May 9, at Waukesha South High School, Five Stones of Fox Valley provided a parent presentation about human trafficking and what can be done to prevent it. Five Stones would like to bring their film Innocence Sold and accompanying presentation to the school district of Waukesha students to educate students on the personal and societal costs of human trafficking. Their goal is to begin providing presentations at no cost to the district students during the 2023-2024 school year. A plan to implement the Five Stone presentation will be shared at the August Student Services Committee meeting. Markell?
Mr. Moore?
I would first like to say thank you to Mark, Michelle, and Deborah for putting this together. You know, we hear about teaching and learning, you know, and the caseload that they have, but here at Student Services, we have our caseload too. And so, you know, we're dealing with a lot of stuff behind the scene with discipline, human trafficking issues, and mental health. It's a lot of work going on in Student Services. And so, and also thank you to Dr. Piasik for forming this committee to make sure that we tackle these issues. But I just want to, again, thank Deborah and Michelle for coming here and taking the time to show us the video of what the impact of technology and social media has on human trafficking, and even educating the board on things that we were not even aware of in the data and statistics, even in our own county here in Waukesha. So again, thank you so much to Mark, Michelle, and Deborah, and we're looking forward to seeing how this rolls out in our district. Again, it's at no cost, as I stated before. So hopefully this will leave some educational tools and resources for not only our students' families, but also the district as a whole.
All righty.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank Anthony Zanobia. He's the committee member that actually brought it up to have it put on the agenda. So appreciate it. Our next Student Services Committee meeting will be held on August 8 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom. This completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. All right. Our next committee report is Human Resources and Compensation, presented by Mark Borowski.
Thank you, Mrs. President. We have one action item this evening and no discussion items. The action item is the approval of the resolution of teacher base wage increase. So earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved the resolution to implement the board's last offer to the EAW for base wage increase. For some background, the EAW advised the district that it will not accept the district's last offer resulting in an impasse. Therefore, Mrs. President, I move to approve the resolution for teacher base wage increase of 3.05% CPI wage adjustment over the 2022-2023 base wage, which results in an effective rate increase of 2% per cell on the teacher salary schedule for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
I need to abstain to avoid any perception of conflict of interest. Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Mark Paul Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero one.
And, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. All right. Our next committee report is Policy and Government Relations, presented by Mr. Zanobia.
Thank you. Thank you. That one work? That's even better. Thank you. So the Policy and Government Relations Committee met on June 12, on Monday evening at 7:00, 7:30-ish. There was one policy discussion and information item on the agenda for us. We met, had been a while since the Policy and Government Relations Committee met, and it was due to the Neola policies coming in. This was Volume 32, Number One. There was an update assigned to all the committees, so we had, I believe, eight or nine policies. But those assigned to the Policy and Government Committee were included on the agenda on June 12, and policies from that update were assigned, again, to those committees, and they'll be agendized through the following months. Okay. Onto our action items, of which we have two. I'm sorry, one action item. Revisions to 18 policies were approved at the committee meeting on June 12, and they were included on the consent agenda this evening. In addition to that, we had one new board policy for consideration, and that was Policy 8802, which would be patriotic activities and observances. This new policy is added to separate the patriotic observances' language from the religious and patriotic ceremonies and observances policy, which was 8800, to more accurately distinguish these concepts from the policy on dealing with religion. It also provides an option relative to moments of the silence intended to avoid religious connotations or such remembrance or recognition of observances. And so on a vote of five to zero, the Policy and Government Relations Committee approved Policy 8802, Patriotic Activities and Observances. The committee requests board approval and ISO move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wad. Thank you. Just as a reminder to everyone in terms of how we handle these, so the reason that the other bolus of policies went to the consent agenda is because those are modifications to existing policies per our bylaws for committees. The way that we handle new policies is that they do come to the full board on the regular agenda. So once approved, modifications can go to consent agenda, just to clarify. Any questions or comments about policy brought forward? Okay. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Mark Paul Moore.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
Our first discussion item pertained to the government relations portion of our meeting, and the first was an update on our state budget, which had been the biennial budget talks. Those are still in the hands of the Joint Finance Committee, and a deal was announced by the governor and Republican leaders on K-12 funding. And we discussed some of the following points or highlights of those updates. This would provide potentially more than $1 billion in spendable revenue for the K-12 education in the state of Wisconsin, maintain two-thirds funding, including a 325 per pupil increase in each fiscal year on revenue limits. It would set aside about $50 million to improve reading and literacy outcomes for K-12 students, the details of which would still be determined. It would provide a per pupil aid increase for choice and independent charter schools. It would invest roughly $30 million over the biennium to continue the governor's initiative to support school-based mental health services statewide. It would reach a 33.3% reimbursement for special education, and it would increase the low revenue ceiling from $10,000 to $11,000 per student.
Mr. Moore?
I have a state budget legislative study. I'll wait until it's.
Okay. So our second discussion item was on the legislative portion. So we had, Dr. Seibert had picked out five pieces of current education legislation to discuss. The first was Assembly Bill 109, which would require one-half credit of financial literacy for the high school graduation. Assembly Bill 295, which was a youth apprenticeship program and career and technical grants. Assembly Bill 24, which was posting child abuse and neglect reporting hotline in school buildings. Assembly Bill 99, maintaining a lifetime teaching administrator or pupil services license. Senate Bill 304, which would prohibit the use of common school funding income distributions for the purchase of obscene material. And also, we had talked about the Early Literacy Instruction Bill, which was released that could provide up to $50 million for reading coaches and approved curriculum purchasing, while also infusing a statewide reading screener and third-grade retention provision beginning in five years. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I've waited because I have two things to discuss, both the state budget and legislative. So I want to first address the state budget update. We, as a policy committee, we have, you know, we had the privilege of diving into this. And I think we really need to, I'm going to say, like I said before in the policy committee, following Mr. Wad, what he said before was that we really need to inquire about the reimbursements coming after the, because we spent the money already forward-thinking on the curriculum, and the state is now going to, you know, give money to districts who waited. But we did everything right in our school district. Like I said, like Mr. Wad said, you know, we, as a teacher and learning committee in the administration, we purchased our curriculum ahead of time. We were forward-thinking. We were on top of things. We were actually proactive rather than reactive. And so I am looking forward to seeing what they say as we send a request for that reimbursement back due to us doing the right thing, and we shouldn't be penalized for it. I'm not going to say that, I don't want to use penalized as a, that's a strong word to use, but there was no clarity on what about the districts who did everything right ahead of time? Are we going to get that money back for the money that we spent on the curriculum ahead of time? Many of you can go back and watch the policy committee if you have not done so, to know what we are discussing with that issue. And then the legislative update, there are a few items that I think that we need to be aware of, as Mr. Zanobia said, and those other board members who did not get this, but the policy committee members did. And we talked about the new legislative update and just some things about, you know, the be aware of, as Mr. Zanobia said, and those other board members who did not get this, but the policy committee members did. And we talked about the new legislative update and just some things about, you know, the science of reading and literacy, things that we need to be aware of coming forward. We've already done most of these things in our district in terms of teaching financial literacy, career and technical education. We are, we have outstanding programs with that. But the science of reading, the new licensure requirements for teachers, I think that if you have not done so, just take the time to understand what this policy is going to mean with the new state update, legislative update from the state. So, that's all I have for you. I do have a copy for board members that don't have one, and I'd be more than happy to share with you.
Any further discussion?
That concludes the report. Our next Policy and Government Relations Committee will be held August 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zanobia. Our last committee to report tonight is Finance and Facilities, given by Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, committee met on Monday, June 14th at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. There were six discussion items. The first discussion item was on database description and pricing. Ms. Landish presented the current database subscription the district uses for elementary, middle, and high school levels before facilitating payment. Prior to the renewal of these subscriptions, Ms. Landish will bring usage information to the board for their consideration. Any questions? The second discussion item was on district association memberships. Dr. Seibert provided an overview of two associations the district subscribes to, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, or WAESB, WASBE, and the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance, SWSA. The committee discussed the services, value add, and benefits member districts receive. The committee will continue these memberships, will continue to discuss these memberships to determine if the associations support and represent our administration, board, and district. Is there any questions?
Mrs. Voight?
It is working now. I just wanted to make a comment that I did attend the SWSA meeting yesterday morning, and they, we talked about many of the issues that we had discussed on Monday evening, and one of them was the, one, the extra one, that we hadn't addressed, the idea of the safety issues and the speak-up, speak-out concept. The nice thing about SWSA is that we have administrators from like 29 other districts that were speaking up, and Mark Hanson spoke about the many opportunities that they have to see the success of that speak-up, speak, you know, that program that they're talking about cutting right now. And he mentioned the situations that, when there is a threat to the district, and how that helps them to be able to address it. And he also mentioned how lives have been saved, you know, through the forewarnings that were given through that. So, we weren't sure, we talked about, like, should we be forward or against it? And just from Mark Hanson's, you know, perspective, it's definitely something that we should be speaking up to try to see some of those components of it continued.
Mr. Wad?
I'm just wondering, Mrs. Voight, did they provide any context for the reasoning behind the proposal to cut that funding?
It's under the DOJ budget, and they felt that it wasn't used as much as they thought it was. It originally came out after one of the Parkland shootings, I think it was, and so, and they felt that a lot of it had been sort of worked out along the way. So maybe the whole thing doesn't have to be renewed, but I think that one program seemed like it was a pretty successful option. I'm not sure if we've had an opportunity in our district to see it in action as well.
Yeah, it has been frequently used in our district. I agree with Dr. Hanson's comments. We have picked up a number of threats. We've had a number of students who have been in a mental health crisis where their friend heard something and they were able to report it. In addition to that, we've had a number of complaints that were, I would say, very low level and unnecessary that came through there as well, but the big ones definitely helped us maintain a secure environment and get the kids the help that they needed.
I think the other thing I'd like to speak to from SWSA, we had talked about the budget, and last night at like 10, 20 after 10, they had proposed the amendment at the legislative level, and we had a copy in our hands at 10:25, like within 15 minutes. That group felt it very important, you know, for us to be like breaking news type of thing, and I think that that's definitely a value add to be part of SWSA.
Thank you. Mr. Zanobia?
So, just to clarify, if, for instance, we didn't have a membership in SWSA, we would still have access to the DOJ resources of something like speak-up, speak-out? Would that be my understanding? So, and the other reason I say that is, I think last year I was the only one that voted to get out of SWSA, and it was just my opinion that, and the same is true a little bit of WASBE. On the legislative things, these organizations have great resources, they have great people, but they tend to be status quo, in lockstep with what you would expect from any lobbying group. And the issue that I take with that is, you know, they're only going to ever lobby for one thing, or one side of things, which, again, would come back to the entire thing that I seem I'm hammering lately as balance, and where do these resources go? Where does this funding go to? And we have someone lobbying on our behalf that doesn't always share all of our values. So, just to add that, as the current WASBE rep, I think it's, would be helpful to sit down with WASBE and maybe speak to some of those concerns with leadership. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to do so.
And I can just add to that, since we had that conversation on Monday night, I have been in communication with Brett Hyde with WASBE, and we're working on finding dates for a conversation so we can really talk about how we optimize our membership in WASBE and maybe some opportunities that we're missing, some opportunities to better utilize our services. I know that we do utilize a lot of their services, so I think just balancing that out, and again, you're just kind of putting in perspective that it was a financial conversation about the, you know, the costs associated with those memberships, that the value that we get from those is really what we kind of want to explore and make sure that that's, you know, good use of taxpayer funding. More to come on that.
All right, the next discussion item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budget limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. The fourth discussion item is the East Charter Agreement. In February of 2023, the board approved the charter school contract for East High School. However, the board-approved contract was not approved by DPI. DPI provided additional requirements to remain a charter school. Susan Poppy, principal of East High School, reviewed the options of continuing the East Charter School Agreement or letting it lapse and transitioning the school under the alternative school laws. It was the recommendation of administration, and the committee concurred that East High School should allow the charter to lapse. There was no action necessary.
Mrs. Voight?
I, as I had done at the meeting, I think I want to commend East High School for their 90% graduation rate, and that was referenced in our public comments, that, you know, we did appreciate the fact that they had a very successful, you know, commencement process. I felt badly that we weren't part of a program, I didn't know that they had, you know, a formal ceremony to honor them, but I think, you know, as a board, you know, it did come up the other night, and again, I just want to compliment them and congratulate the success rate in the graduates from East High School.
Mr. Wad?
Yeah, since there were public comments on it, I've seen some public comments online. Could someone help me understand who makes the decisions about East graduation? I know it's not particularly germane.
Final order.
Can I, yeah, I just want to clarify that we're, this is part of the FNF committee report.
Fair enough.
If we have questions about the charter agreement, we could take those now. If you want to make a suggestion for a future topic, we can do that at the end of the meeting.
The next discussion item is an ESAR update. We have claimed and received 2.1 million of our 7.1 million ESAR II funds. The performance period for this grant ends September 30th, 2023. We have 2 million of HVAC work that will be completed this summer, plus the remaining smaller purchases that will be placed this summer. We expect to have all funds fully spent by September. And the final discussion item is the secondary enrollment report. Dr. Seibert provided an update on secondary enrollment projections. Consistent with prior updates and similar with districts statewide, enrollment trends continue to decline. The Board of Education has had no conversations or received any current recommendations regarding closing a secondary school. Administration continues to review enrollment trends and any impact on the district's facility footprint. Questions? Okay. The next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting-
Sorry, Mrs. Kozlowski, I think Mrs. Voight had a question.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Seibert for addressing my concern that I raised at the last board meeting about, talking about the rumors of closing North and doing it in this way, to let the community know about, you know, the current studies and the trends, et cetera, that we're addressing, and to address the rumors that have been running rampant, that we were actually closing North High School, and without any foundation for that type of rumor.
Thank you. Mr. Zanobia?
So, I just had a, I did watch the FNF around the discussion on North. I'm just curious, I, I don't know, we've said there's rumors around, there has been rumors. I guess my question would be, from an administration standpoint, how, have these been long-running rumors of years, or is this more recent? Or, I mean, it's obviously not part of the discussion, but it was talked about. I guess, when did these rumors begin? Why did this become, and I guess maybe in some of the community, such a concern?
I'd be happy to try to talk to-
I'd be happy to try to address that, Mr. Zanobia. I could say, maybe roughly a year, I would say, I would think that I've been, we've been hearing some of that. I think it somewhat coincides with the fact that we did the Whittier and Hadfield merger, the fact that we sold two buildings, and, you know, the sale of Randall was a 30-year rumor, right, that was going to happen, and that it actually did happen. So I think that fed into it a little bit. I think when we see the vast amount of open seats that we have at the high school level approaching the size of nearly one of our high schools, that leads to some discussion. I think some of the co-op-ing that we're doing in athletics, where we can't field teams at some of our schools, and we're having to combine schools to create teams, leads to some of it. And then I think also the fact that you see the Green Bay's, La Crosse's, West Dallas, Wausau, there's a number of school districts that are having conversations that have more than one high school about consolidating. I think those factors all sort of come together to create maybe the perfect storm around it. So, to Mrs. Voight's point, we thought it was just important to show the numbers and to show some of the trends and to show some of the projections, and to also just show clearly that, you know, we are willing to make those decisions when we need to at various levels, and certainly, we appreciate your willingness to consider those ideas, but also to make clear that there hadn't been any board-level discussion about a secondary school, there hasn't been an administrative recommendation to do anything with a secondary school, but that there is the responsibility, I guess I would say, as the administration to continue to monitor all of those factors to maximize the opportunities and maximize the footprint of the district to the greatest extent possible.
Thank you for providing some context for me. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I actually had the privilege of attending the Finance Committee as an audience member, where Dr. Seibert did address some of the concerns, and I just want to say thank you. You did a phenomenal job with the numbers, with the data, and just bringing some clarity to not only the board but the community, so thank you for that.
Okay, Mrs. Kozlowski.
The next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 7th at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we're now at the point of the meeting where we would accept any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items. Mr. Wad, did we want to circle back to your recommendation?
Yes, thank you. Can we get an understanding of how the various high schools, east, or north, south, west, east, E-Achieve, plan and organize their commencement ceremonies? Who makes the decisions on who is invited to attend and participate, so that we can clarify, both for board members and perhaps the public, how those decisions are made?
Yep. Yes, I'll make note of that, and since we don't have committees in July, we may just want to consider putting that on as just an update item for the July board meeting. Mr. Moore?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah.
Dr. Seibert?
This isn't a future agenda item or anything, but I did just want to take a moment to say that the conclusion of this meeting will be the conclusion of the Dr. Cook tenure of nine years here in the School District of Waukesha, and I certainly wanted to thank him for his dedication, his service, and in my case, over the last three years, his partnership. It's been very much appreciated. And I know I speak for all of us in this room when I say that we're very proud of you, we're very excited for you to take on the superintendency in Maguannago, and we wish you all the best, Joe.
All right, before I forget and before we move to adjourn to executive session, just a reminder that our next meeting will be here in the boardroom at Blair on July 12th at 7:00 PM. We do not have committee meetings in the month of July, so we will take up any time-sensitive business at that board meeting, and we will reconvene with committee meetings starting Monday, August 8. And that will be a busy week because we're packing everything into three days. So, enjoy your time off and come back prepared. We do have a need for executive session tonight. We will need item C, D, C and D. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Did you say B, C, and D?
C and D.
C and D, okay. I can make that motion.
Thank you.
So, I would move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 parent one, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the government and the body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, personnel matter. I'd also like to move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 parent one, parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining sessions require a closed session, transportation contracts, school safety project, and Oakdale property.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Thank you, Sue, you'll take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
Aye.
Markwell Moore?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes 90. We will re-adjourn to open session to take action on some of these items. So, that concludes our initial open session.